Really? Is it just me, or is that light shining right in your eyes?
Just sort of...
I can't see anyone else.
At least Jason was smarter than putting his makeup on.
Good evening. Like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education for December 7th. Will Board Secretary please take attendance?
All Board members are present.
Thank you very much. This is one of those special evenings that we have when we're here in our auditorium to appreciate some of the wonderful achievements of our staff and our students at the end of a wonderful semester. And we have a lot on our agenda tonight, and I'm not going to give a long speech, but thank you so much for being part of our Bloomfield Hills Schools community. We are proud of our staff, we are proud of our community, and we thank you for sharing your children with us. We are glad to be part of the opportunity to help them find a wonderful future. And with that, I'd like to ask for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag... ...of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Glass, would you like to give us a group attendance report, please?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm going to keep my comments brief this evening, but this is really a season of thankfulness, and if you go out throughout our buildings, you see that all of our buildings and many of the teams within our buildings are all engaged in some level of grateful giving, and very pleased about that. It's a value, one of our core values that we have, to be of service to others and to just to be giving back. And so I want to thank all of the staff and all of the children and all of the families who are engaged in these wonderful endeavors. It's so very important, and it means so much to others in need, and so thank you once again for that. And in keeping with that theme, I would like to recognize our foundation and thank you, all of you, who've given so generously to the recent annual campaign for the Bloomfield Hills Schools Foundation. When you walked in, when the screen was down, I'm sure you saw many of the examples of the things that the foundation has accomplished, but those things could not be accomplished without your generous donations and the donations of so many out there in our community, and I want to thank you all for that. Your donations have supported some exceptional learning opportunities that you see throughout our schools, and your contributions have funded over 200 grants, supporting special programs all throughout all BH schools. And you've supported academic enrichment, you've supported STEM, the arts, special education, and so much more. And in November, just this past November, we are proud to say that with your help, we were able to award 26 grants. And some of the highlights of those grants include an elementary school mindfulness program, middle school robotics equipment, an eighth grade novel study, and many, many other, just really innovative and forward-thinking projects that make our schools special. And your gift is an investment. It's an investment in our schools, it's an investment in your students, and it's an investment in our today and our tomorrow. So I really want to thank you all, and remind you that you can continue donating through our annual appeal right through the end of this month, through December 31st. And it's really easy. You just go to our website, find the foundation link, and you can do that online. We make it very, very easy. You go to www.bloomfield.org/give. Again, thank you very, very much. And also, one last reminder, that we, again, in the spirit of thankfulness, are going to be recognizing recently retired Board President Ingrid Day one week from tonight, out in the Commons, at which time the Commons will be renamed in her honor, and we're so proud to be able to do that. We will have a ceremony at 6:30, and it should only take, you know, 30 or 40 minutes, we anticipate, but it will be a really special time, and we are serving refreshments. So if you know Ingrid, or you respected her from afar through the years, this would be a great time to come and witness something really special, and wish her all the best in this new honor. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Glass. Okay, so now is our opportunity to have our student special and staff recognition, and Dr. Glass and I are going to move up so we can shake hands with our special folks tonight, and Jackie's going to read their names.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started with tonight's celebration, we just want to remind everyone to join us for reception in the main Commons. It won't be immediately after recognition, it'll be after the next agenda item, but right after that, outside of the auditorium doors. So I would also like to remind all those being recognized this evening to please come up on the stage when your group or name is called via the stairs to my right. You will then cross the center of the stage and remain there for your portion of your presentation. When your section is complete, please cross to the podium so that we can give you this lovely pin, and shake your hand, which is very important, and really thank you for everything you've done. So, we know that we have a lot of success stories that are going to require more than one person to help the students achieve their goals, which is why we would like to first recognize the family members, classmates, teachers, coaches of the student or staff member being honored tonight. So if you are here to support a student or a staff member, please stand up so that we can acknowledge you. So, thanks so much. Your encouragement is essential to the continued excellence of our wonderful school district. So, to begin with, I would like to welcome Rob Direkka, Principal of West Hills Middle School, and Mark Honeyman to the stage.
We're getting your steps in.
We actually follow directions very well. Good job. As Jackie said, I'm principal at West Hills Middle School, and standing to my right is Sidney Harker and Mr. Honeyman. You know, and our mission tonight is to recognize Mark, who was an eighth grade English language arts teacher at West Hills. And Mr. Honeyman has received the Excellence in Education Award sponsored by the Michigan Lottery. But before I speak about the award, I want to say a little bit about Sidney. Sidney, like many students, has been positively impacted by Mr. Honeyman. She has Mr. Honeyman for English class, participates in two clubs cosponsored by Mr. and Mrs. Honeyman, Count Me In, an anti-boying club, and our Building Book Club. Motivated by her experiences in Mark's class and clubs, Sidney, on her own initiative, took action to nominate Mr. Honeyman for this award. In Sidney's words, she said that she was thinking about her favorite teachers, and she thought about what she could do to make them happy. She went on to say that she searched for Best Teacher Awards in Michigan and found the Excellence in Education Award. Sidney's act of nominating Mr. Honeyman is a microcosm of some of the important things that students learn and develop under the tutelage of Mark Honeyman. Throughout Sidney's nomination essay, themes like dedication, belongingness, trust, love of service, and mastery of the subject matter resonated, and importantly, taking action to change the world, which was evidenced by a quote that she used in her nomination, and is also part of Mr. Honeyman's signature block. His students know his Steve Jobs quote well. Those who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are the ones who do. Sidney, your efforts in nominating Mr. Honeyman are an affirmation of Mr. Honeyman's belief that the work he does can change the world, because you are evidence that his work has done just that. The award itself is one of the most prestigious in the state of Michigan. Mr. Honeyman received a $1,500 cash prize and a $500 grant to be used to purchase materials for his classroom. Guess what? He probably bought books, okay? Additionally, he was featured in an interview on WXYZ-TV this evening, and if you missed it, it'll be aired again tomorrow between 12:00 and 12:30. And lastly, and maybe the most impressive of all, Mr. Honeyman is now one of 34 teachers statewide being considered for the Michigan Teacher of the Year. Join me in congratulating Mr. Honeyman, and thank you, Sidney, for taking action.
Great teachers and great students. Next, we will welcome Jennifer Alsmeier to recognize De'Ar Nasiri. Please come forward.
De'Ar Nasiri is an ESL paraprofessional and is also the parent liaison for all of the Bloomfield Hills School District. She is working to bridge our school life with our Arabic-speaking families. She is one of our most precious resources, and she teaches the staff about our students' culture just as much as she teaches our families about Bloomfield Hills Schools' culture. De'Ar works endlessly to help everyone keep updated in the summer, over school vacations, on the weekends, and sometimes even in the middle of the night. She helps to interpret at our parent-teacher conferences, and she still manages to keep her sense of humor no matter how busy we get. De'Ar's to-do list is lengthy, including parent communication, student assistance, cultural navigation, home outreach education, staff support, and so much more. She facilitates parent meetings to help explain how to register for school, complete necessary paperwork, assist students with their homework, and access extracurricular activities. Occasionally, De'Ar will even send out staff emails to help us understand holidays and celebrations in which our students and their families participate. De'Ar is as much a teacher as she is a life coach and a guide. Without her help, we would be mired in misunderstandings, and we are grateful for her each and every day.
Surprise! So lovely. Now, please help me welcome Angela DeRochers and Austin Roca to the stage.
Austin and I both teach at the preschools for Bloomfield Hills, so my speech is going to be a little bit different from everybody else's. I started out a few days ago to sit down and write this speech, and then I had an email sent out asking for two to three words, nothing more, just two to three words describing Austin to the staff. And it went out to Conant, all Conant preschool, and all of Lone Pine preschool. Well, what I've brought here tonight is what a few of them have said back, and I just ripped up my speech. I thought, forget that, I couldn't have said it better myself. And so, Austin, I want you to know what the staff thinks of you, all right? By some of these things that came back, and I promise I won't go over two minutes. Somebody wrote, one of your teachers wrote, our teachers, "Goes above and beyond superhero to the children and very kind." Somebody else wrote, "Warm and big-hearted." Another said, "Great intuition with children, is thoughtful, kind, and fun." Mr. Austin is kind children, he's kind, children love him, and he is going to be a great dad one day, which I've said to you a million times, but that wasn't mine. He's kind, hardworking, and always a gentleman. Everything that I'm writing here was what I was going to put into mind, but I thought there's no sense, and might as well let you know that everybody feels this way, okay? Austin is fun, he's playful, caring, kind, and a good disciplinarian. He really loves those kids. And it's very true. He's fun-loving, has a heart of gold, and when he speaks, the kids listen. I've been told, by somebody else, I have been told by a very special mom, this is me now talking, I have been told by a very special mom that you are selfless, you're kind-hearted, and you're fun-loving. Austin, I can go on and on all night about this, about how great you are. I've told you from the very beginning how I always thought you were an excellent teacher, you do have a heart of gold, you have an answer for everything, and if you don't, you are so quick to get on it. And I've always said, it blows my mind, I've always said that about you, you know, that for somebody young and, you know, the whole bit, you're just, you're always on top of it. But to sum it up, this is one that came in yesterday. Austin is a one-of-a-kind man with a huge heart for children. From his custom swing pushing, special kind for each child, to his warm, kind, and fun ways, students learn and grow from him. He has never forgotten in the hearts of his students who, 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 even after years of being long gone from preschool, they still come rushing up to him with a hug or a high-five. He is very loved by both students and parents and the staff. We all feel so lucky to be working with him, right? That was really well said and really, really nice. Anyway, my goal for you is that one of these days, you're going to get that frisbee into that hoop from the other side of the gymnasium, and when you do, I'm going to be the one that's going to videotape it. And that videotape's going straight to the Ellen Show, and that's where I hope to see you someday with that, with that master skill of yours. You're great, you're just great.
Wow, that was great. We even had the perfect sound effects. Perfect. Next up, we have Lisa Brown and Megan Gornick. Please make your way to the stage.
We needed an accommodation. My name is Lisa Brown, and I'm the Transition Coordinator for the Bloomfield Hills School District. It's my 24th year in public education, so I've been around the block a little bit, so I know a good one when I see one. And Megan Gornick is probably one of the finest educators I've ever had the opportunity to work with. And there's so many reasons. Biggest thing, as part of my job, is to have connections to outside agencies for students who have developmental disabilities, and Megan Gornick is always open to alter her lesson plans if I have an outside agency that can come into the school district and work with our students even prior to them exiting. And that's a huge thing, she's done it twice, and there are big extensive, we're not talking one or two classes, we're talking several weeks, once a week, and that's huge, but the benefit for her students, she has no problem sacrificing because she knows it's the best thing for her students, even though there might be certain things she wants to do. She gets it all done, and she allows the agencies to come in, and that is a transition coordinator dream. She does all kinds of things for the student community here at the high school. She's really, really big, and it's not about the things that they can do, but just the fact that they are providing some sort of a service for their school and they get recognized. And a couple of years ago, we actually had vests ordered and made them, and it has our Bloomfield Hills mascot with the Black Hawks so that people know that the students are actually working and providing a service in their school. And it's so funny, because it takes a couple of weeks to get it going, and I'll get so many phone calls and emails saying, when are the kids going to start with the recycling? When are the kids going to start with, you know, the teacher trades? When are the kids, so, I mean, the amount of things that the students do for, in her program, and it's all because of her. She has this great vision, and she'll come to me, and then we put it together, and we make it work, and it's just amazing. So programs inside the building. We were fortunate to be recipient of the Bloomfield Hills Foundation a couple of years ago, as well as the Autism Society grant, and it was Megan's idea to do a garden when the high school first opened. And her students, we were able to get, I was able to write and secure the grants, and Megan put the money to great use. I was out on disability for a short amount of time, and she was sure to share all the pictures of the kids going to Home Depot, getting all of the materials, doing all of the planting, all of the digging, and it was like I was right there, and it was great. The other thing she does, she does fundraisers and charities for the students, so every year she does the lighthouse, and they adopt families. And she sends out an email, and the staff participate in certain things, and her students get the opportunity to see all of these gifts brought in, and she goes through and she tallies all of them, and it gives them an idea of what it's like to give. And that's probably one of the most important lessons that a young person can learn, especially a student who has so many challenges and so many needs to be able to give, is just amazing. So that's a huge thing, the giving back. So there's so many other things. She did another great charity when I was off on disability. She had the whole staff wear hats when I had lost all my hair, and sent me all the pictures, which was great, and it was actually in the state of the staff. She, her and a couple of other people, collected almost over $1,000 with the gift cards for food and things for my family while I was off. And it just, another opportunity for the students to see what it's like to give, instead of always needing, they're able to give back. So I'd say for these reasons and so many others, I can't even begin to recognize all the things that I didn't even mention about Megan Gornick. She truly is a rock star educator, her kids love her, I work with the students at the post-high program, and they still talk about Mrs. Gornick, and they probably will forever. She's left a lasting, lasting, lasting impression on their hearts and on their lives, and for that, I'm truly grateful.
Now we have Bowers Academy teacher Nicholas Riggs and student Allison Frankfurt. Please welcome to the stage.
Do I have Allison? Is Allison here? Okay, well, let me tell you a little about Allison. Allison currently carries a 4.0 average at Bowers during her first semester here as a student. In addition, she has chosen to tackle several social justice issues for her projects, as well as being a role model for the student success at Bowers Academy. Congratulations to Allison.
Okay, next up, we have Kathy Rumi and Marilyn Glazer.
Hello, I'm Kathy Reem, and I'm a counselor with the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, serving students at East Hills and Bloomfield Hills High School. However, like Lisa, I've been around for many years, and I see a gem, when I see a gem, I know it, and I'm very happy to be here tonight to tell you about a special person. I really believe that teaching is an art. Teachers create their vision, they develop classroom cultures, they design all of their lessons, blending their personality, their life experiences, and all of their best skills together. And school, I really think, is sort of like this room we're in. It's sort of like a theater. It's sort of like an opportunity to perform. When the school bells ring, school begins. When the curtains open here, the performance begins. There's classrooms, and then there's the stage. There's materials, and there's props. There's professional development, and there's scripts. There's teachers, and there's actors. There's substitute teachers, and what I want to talk to you tonight about is the understudy. Marilyn Glazer has been our most cherished understudy, substitute teacher extraordinaire. An understudy, it's a stand-in, a replacement, a fill-in, a standby, a relief, a backup, a substitute. somebody that can make sure the show goes on. And we're here this evening to recognize a very outstanding person. Marilyn Glazer has been described by her colleagues as being dedicated, caring, friendly, generous, intelligent, and supportive, passionate about supporting her students and staff in our DHH program for over 20 years. Marilyn was discovered back at Eastover by a woman named Victoria Fox. She noticed many substitutes coming and going. But when she noticed, Marilyn could sign. She could sign to our deaf and hard-of-hearing children. Her hands were moving, and it was meaningful. And she knew how to deliver. Well, Marilyn's done many amazing things over the years to rescue and to come and help and assist. Recently, this year, we needed a full-time sub for two months. Marilyn came in, and she was a sub that worked diligently. She realized in every way that teaching was an art form, creating valuable lessons, communicating with staff and parents, relating to, to students in an amazing way, connecting in all of the things that she knows about her world and her world travels, and being a prolific reader. And she brings all that richness to our students. And sometimes, our students can be challenging. One of our students that we had this year that came in the fall was an eighth-grade student, adopted from China, who didn't know Chinese in writing and in speak, and not in speaking, but in writing and reading, but no English. Eighth grader, no English. No signing, no speaking, no reading or writing. That's the challenge that came before her. In the past, teachers have reported that she came to the rescue when family members were deceased, even at the beginning of a school year, and launching off a school year, and just picking up the lesson plans and carrying with it. So she's done some amazing things. She's been a, she's taken care of, um, our students when teachers had to be on medical leave, or maternity leave, or emergencies that came up. We're grateful to Marilyn for all the gifts that she's shared with us. We're grateful she's been able to sign. We're grateful that she has a shared language with our students so that she could truly connect. Marilyn has delivered a great performance. And so I think she deserves a wonderful round of applause.
Wow. We have some really just wonderful, awesome staff and students in our district. It's really powerful. Now I'd like to ask athletic staff, R.J. Guzzelli and John Seiko, to please join us on stage.
Good evening, everyone. It is my distinct pleasure and honor to have the opportunity to recognize our certified athletic trainer, John Seiko, this evening. If you are an athlete, if you are the parent of an athlete, you've probably interacted with John at some point or the other. He services over, probably over 1,000 athletes every school year. And recently, late October, Bloomfield Hills High School was awarded Safe Sports School Recognition, sponsored by the National Athletic Trainers Association. This is a national recognition that champions those schools that create, promote, and provide a positive and appropriate healthcare model for their high school students. In addition to the model we have created, it recognizes the work that we do to provide a well-equipped area to evaluate and treat injured athletes, develop injury and illness strategies, facilitate injury intervention, create venue-specific emergency action plans, and educate students and parents on both the benefits and risks of sports. This is what John wrote about this award. So those are his words. What I will tell you all is in 28 years of working in public schools in a variety of roles, it is very rare, or was very rare, for me to ever be as impressed by anyone as I am by John and the work that he does. His relationships with administration, coaches, parents, and most of all, our student athletes is unmatched anywhere in the districts that I've worked in before. If you have an athlete in this school, and I do, you want them to see John if they get injured, if they're sore, if they're sick. It does not matter. John will take a look at you. And I have had John look at my injuries before too. So he does a little bit of everything. It is very nice to have someone as successful and respected as John. As a part of our team, we work very closely with John. And there are not too many decisions made in our athletic department that involve our student athletes that we don't at least consult John about. So John, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do.
Next, please help me welcome Dan Bagley and Jody Harrington to the stage.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening and, and honor. You know, I work, I've worked at the Nature Center for about 29 years now. And I'm very blessed with a great staff. And anybody who has visited, had your kids come there, I think, know what I'm talking about. This evening, though, we're going to honor one of the staff, Jody Harrington. And it's quite an honor for me to do this. Recently, Jody was awarded the 2017 Recognition Award by the Michigan Association of Environmental and Outdoor Educators at their Fall Conference, which this year was held up at Central Michigan University in Mount Pleasant. So this is a statewide organization that, um, is an advocate of environmental and outdoor education and has been in existence for many years. So this is quite an honor. So for over 30 years, Jody's passion for environmental education has been evident in all that she's done for students of all ages. First, as a classroom teacher in Southfield, Jody integrated environmental education throughout her daily lessons, creating memorable experiences for her students. She took this passion for environmental education outside of her classroom. By creating a school garden, working with elementary school staff, she created a space for students and teachers to use to extend their classroom curriculum and make real-world connections to nature. Her passion for the garden extended beyond the school walls to the community. During the summer, for example, uh, community members helped to maintain and harvest the garden. At the end of the awards ceremony, it was noted that she is a lifelong learner, I think that's putting it mildly, who never stops being curious. And that's an understatement as well. As a prime example, Jody recently completed a Master of Science degree from the University of Michigan. Her focus for her thesis was the effective use of a school garden and its potential to support educational experiences at school. And after all those years, um, in Southfield, finally, she joined us as a Nature Center guide a few years ago. And her love for nature, her curiosity, enthusiasm, again, I can't emphasize that one enough, has been and continues to be an inspiration to students and staff and all who have walked a path with Jody. We are fortunate indeed to count Jody as one of our outstanding Bloomfield Hills Schools staff members. Please join me in congratulating Jody for all that she's done.
So last, but certainly not least, please help me welcome the board, the boys varsity tennis team to the stage along with their coaches and mentors.
I'll get started as the boys are coming up. I mentioned earlier, I've been in education for 28 years. I have worked as an athletic administrator for 18 of those years. I will tell you, I have not been more excited at a sporting event than I have been at the last two boys tennis state finals meets. Unfortunately, it looks like Coach Burks was not able to make it. Coach Nick is here to, uh, to, to be our leader for the evening. I appreciate that, Coach. I would like to congratulate our coaches, our tennis players, and their parents for the dedication that they have shown towards this team. Just a quick little story about these boys. Two years ago, they won a co-state championship, the first-ever state championship for Bloomfield Hills High School. A couple of the boys, when we gathered to honor the, the team, approached me and apologized for not winning it outright. I thought that was a really strange thing for them to do. They said, if you come up to next year's state championship or state finals, we will win it for you. So I went back in the fall of 2016. We're still honoring them, even though they didn't win last year. I had so much fun, and I brought my boys, and, and they, they thought it was the most exciting thing, too. After they did not win in 2016, they swore to me, a few of the boys, we will win it in 2017. We went back this fall and had so much fun cheering the boys on, interacting with them and their parents as they won the first outright state championship in Bloomfield Hills High School history. So congratulations. Leading up to the state meet, the boys won the OAA, the top division of the, of our league. They swept the regional tournament, which is pretty much unheard of. I believe they took first place in every single flight except one. And the one they did not win, we had a tennis player, and you're going to hear a little bit more about him in a few minutes, or in a minute. He was injured and chose not to participate, I believe, in the, uh, in the finals. Is that correct, Teeny? Yes? No? Okay. So they swept through the regional and then went to the state finals. At the state finals, we had some runner-ups. Andrew Zhang, runner-up number-one singles. We had Adrian Weyland and Chris Sauer, runner-up at number-three doubles. And Konstantin Hemrich, three-time state champion individually at number-one, or number-three singles, sorry. In the number-one doubles flight, we had the brother team of Cade and Sebastian Berman, state champions at number-one doubles. And this next doubles team, the number-two doubles team, after their semifinal match, I went up to Chaz and I said, "Congratulations. Could you maybe not lose the first set in the finals? Because it's really hard on my heart to watch you lose the first one and have to come back and win the next two." Sure enough, Chaz Blamo and Vic Chakrabarti lost the first set of their doubles state finals match and came back and won the next two. They are state champions at number-two doubles as well. As I told the boys and their parents when we honored them here at the high school, um, not long after the state finals, they have established pretty much a dynasty, and they have established a legacy here for the teams to follow. What two of the fathers told me after that recognition was that they're going to be even better next year. No pressure, boys. Good luck. Congratulations.
Well, thanks for your support of our district. Tonight is a little bit unique in that our next agenda item is the appointment of our new HR Assistant Superintendent. So we hope that you'll take a moment, um, after this to go to the Commons and meet her and welcome her to Bloomfield Hills Schools.
Do you need a motion or anything?
Yes. I'd like a motion, please. Mr. Collins?
Yes. I move that Kelly Boyle be appointed as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Labor Relations. The effective date will be determined by the superintendent.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Support from Mr. Ford. Any discussion? Um, if they have a please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Welcome, Kelly. So I have to tell you a little story here. I just want you to know what a gauntlet we made Kelly go through on. We, we had a, as you, as most of you or many of you know, Christine Barnett, who is currently in the role of Assistant Superintendent for HR and Labor Relations, is going to be retiring, retiring within the next several months. And so we embarked on a journey to find her successor. And I just want you all to be assured that Kelly came through this process with flying colors. Several rounds and, oh, assessment questions from outside agencies and, and so forth. She comes to us from Wayne Westland Schools, where she has the same role. She comes to us from Wayne Westland Schools where she has the same role and has a great wealth of experience in the role. And so we're just delighted that she's going to be joining us, we hope, here in mid-January. And I wanted to give you a chance to meet her and have her say a few words to you. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. I can't think of a better night to be welcomed to your, now our, school district than on a student and a staff recognition night. I am just honored and tickled to be able to serve in this capacity. And I really look forward to working with the people I met through the interview process and also with the Bloomfield Hills School community collectively. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome, Kelly.
All right, at this time, we're going to take a brief break for 10 minutes while we have a reception to honor all of our wardies this evening. Thank you. We'll return in about 10 minutes. Interested in making a public comment this evening, please get a blue public comment card at the back of the room. And also in the back of the room, you will find copies of the motion and background information regarding the land swap. If anybody's interested, there are extra copies of it at the back of the room. And while Dr. Glass is distributing these to the board, I just want to thank this evening's TV crew. Our students helping us this evening are Kyle Abrams, Nate Durekka, Noah Charnis, Henry Parkinson, Cameron Carlton, and Joelle Hamilton. And they are supported by staff Scott Cleveland, Dave Shulkin, Matthew Webster, and Vicki Chandler. So thank you all for helping us get through to our community to share our board meeting. All right, and now I'd like to call us back into business. And our next item is our consent agenda. Jackie, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, study session one of November 13, 2017. Request to approve minutes, closed meeting of November 13, 2017. Request to approve minutes, study session two of November 13, 2017. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of November 13, 2017. Request to approve minutes, study session three of November 13, 2017. Approve final contract payments for December 2017 in the amount of $76,976.30. Request to approve Barton Mallow staffing plan in the amount of $213,836. Request to approve two-year agreement with the Bloomfield Hills Association of Instructional Assistance. Request to approve bylaws of the Oakland County School Boards Association. Request to approve Farm and Nature Center guides pay rates. Request to approve disbursement reports. Request to approve HR actions.
Do I have support yet?
Support.
Support from Mr. Cullen. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, I'd like to hear the report of the Board Instruction Committee meeting from December 4th. Mr. Ford. Jackie?
Hey. I didn't know I was giving a report. We had a great meeting. We discussed the learning services initiatives in quite a lot of detail. Sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Do you have it?
We're going to be FFLA.
Yeah, why don't you go at FFLA and we'll...
All right. Can I have the report from the Finance Facility Legal Affairs Committee?
Yes, at the FFLA meeting, we talked about, there are a couple of things on the agenda. We talked about the bus replacement plan that we're going to be working on, along with a couple of other vehicles in terms of the replacement plan for the next year or so. We also talked about the sinking fund projects that Brian and his team are going to be working on in the summer in 2018. And we also talked about the Barton Mallow staffing plan coming up for the year. So we had a quick, short agenda for FFLA.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready now.
Okay. Perfect time.
Any questions regarding FFLA? All right, thank you.
Okay, so in our Board Instruction Committee meeting, one of the things that we did was we went over the high school proposals, the course proposals. And these either had tweaks in the catalog descriptions, or they had some changes, or also there were some things that because of the high school coming together, there were some changes and tweaks to the catalog or that needed to be approved. In addition, there were several new classes that were discussed and also to allow us to understand the changes.
One of the additional classes that was added was an expansion to the farm program. The manager from the, the new manager from the farm was there and he showed us not only you're going to have a basic program, but a more advanced program of agri-science. So that was a very encouraging thing, that we're really seeing a greater utilization of the farm facilities related to our academic programs.
And we're moving towards having this class be in alignment with the students being able to have six credits at MSU for that class in high school. In addition, we had a great presentation on something called Teaching Artistic Behavior. And this is really an initiative brought forward by one of our teachers, Stephanie Olson. And it takes it from being very teacher-driven art classes to more exploratory and student-owned initiatives so that it really helps the students build the skills of being able to come up with ideas on their own. Because in the past, what happens is the student would, the teacher might have a certain project and then the student would do exactly the steps that the teacher asked them to do. And in order to really develop creativity and becoming an artist, it really needs to be more student-driven and they come up with a concept and then they create, help, you know, create the project and the initiative to be able to have the art happen in the way that they envision. And so it really is more about creating behaviors and skills in our students.
Howard, what else would, do you remember from the other? Anything else?
Nope, nope. That was about it.
Yeah, the only thing on the tab, which is Teaching Artistic Behavior, it's less on trying to change the focus from technique and more on creativity, which is one of the four Cs that we've been trying to strive for.
Thanks for your help. Very good. Thank you both. All right, I think that, is there anything else for our general discussion? Okay, then we will move on into our public comment section of our meeting. Just before we get started, yes, if you have not already filled out a blue card if you wish to speak, please do so now and bring it over to Sherri Hart over in the side and she'll get them to us. And I'd just like to make a comment here. Public comment is a time for individuals to share their thoughts with the board, but it is not a time for a dialogue with the board. Those who wish to speak at public comment are asked to create, to complete a public comment request card. And in the interest of fairness, each speaker will be given a two-minute time limit. And Mr. Ford is going to be our timekeeper this evening. Please respect all speakers. And I would ask that you refrain from clapping or booing in order to be fair to everyone. Thank you. So I think what I will do is, we have like 25 cards here. And I think I will ask three people, read out three names. And the first one, you know, I'll call you up, but then we can sort of keep people moving and have some folks on deck. And so the first name I have, please state your name and where you live when you come to the mic, which will be over here at the podium. And the names I have are Steve Weiner and David Dronkowski. And the third one is Ken Macon. So if you please will come on forward and you'll be the first three speakers.
Well, I was the last one to turn in a card, so my first one to be called. My name is Steve Weiner. I live at 4339 Spruce Hill Lane in Bloomfield Hills. It's north of the project on Wing Lake Road. It's a complex set of circumstances that you face tonight, and I don't think very many of the people really understand the history of what went on with this deal. And I don't think it's easy for me as a speaker to try to summarize it for everybody else. But I would say the following. You're being put in an awkward position to try and weigh two choices. One is to negatively impact the aesthetic value of the nature preserve, which nobody wants to do, good goal to not hurt that, and potentially impact the environment, although I personally think that lots and lots and lots of homes are built on lakes all day long and they don't negatively impact the body of water. So just generally. That's one choice. The other choice is to negatively impact 15 or 20 homeowners whose backyards, front yards, side yards, open spaces, where they walk their dogs, where they raise their kids, where they taught them how to play ball, could be turned into housing. And I guess I would argue that as stewards of education, when you do analysis, you have to be fair and thorough. And at this point in time, the developer who's here, who's a nice enough fellow, I know him, has said that the plan that we saw, and this is the best rendition we've ever gotten, which is tonight, but the plan that we saw, submitted to us, was illegible. And he said himself, "The plan doesn't necessarily reflect what he intends to do. It's not certain. There's field work that has to be done." So the folks who live around here on this site plan really don't know what the deal is. They don't know what's going to be open space. They don't know what's going to be housing. They don't know where the line is going to be. They don't exactly understand how wetlands that exist on this map and you can go see are going to be impacted. And you're being put in a position like a planning commissioner. And if you were planning commissioners, appointed, you're elected, you probably would have to go and look at that site and say, "What are we doing to these folks versus the nature center?" And with all due respect, I don't think as educators that you have the time or the skills to go look at that site. It's not fair to expect you to do it. But if you're going to sit here and choose these people's homes and their lives over aesthetic impact in a nature center, then unfortunately, you're put in that position. And if you're not prepared to do that, and we don't even understand what this drawing says, how can you vote on this? You have an incomplete data set. You can't legitimately vote on it as elected officials until you have the complete data. So that would be my recommendation, is to table it, get the information from the developer, get some facts, present them to these folks, and then make the judgment in a fair and unbiased way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Mr. Dronkowski?
Good evening. My name is Dave Dronkowski. I live at 6961 Cathedral Drive, just slightly north and east of the proposed land swap. I've been a resident of Bloomfield Hills and Birmingham Farms for about five and a half years. One of the reasons we chose to move to the neighborhood was, first and foremost, the excellent school districts that are provided. But second, the green space, which our family takes advantage of on a regular basis, is a place to exercise, to enjoy family time, to bring our children, and to bring our dogs and just get to spend quality time together. Our neighborhood conducts a Halloween party every year, or a Halloween parade every year. The parade actually ends in that green space. The kids are allowed to choose pumpkins and have cider and donuts, and it is really a gathering place for the neighborhood. I agree with my neighbor that it's difficult for any of us to make a decision without a full data set. But taking away that space from us, independent of what the development may look like, really does impact our lives and our home life as residents of Bloomfield Hills. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Ken Macon?
Folks, please refrain from applauding or showing any appreciation one way or the other. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ken Macon. I live at 4568 Fairway Rears Court, West Bloomfield, Michigan. I am president of the Friends of the E.L. Johnson Center. The Friends is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, 501(c)(3) organization. Our vision is that the Johnson Nature Center will be the premier publicly-owned nature preserve in Oakland County. It will teach our visitors and students that the decisions we make today affect tomorrow's ecological systems and that we must preserve and protect the floral and water quality of the center. A proposal was made to develop the adjacent property to the center. The Friends feel that the development of such property will have an adverse effect on the ecological, water, and scenic qualities of the center. Therefore, the Friends are in full support of the proposal to execute the land exchange of the 7273 Wing Lake Road property for the 3355 Franklin Road property, which is adjacent to the nature center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three speakers will be Ronald Fenwick, Andrea Kane, and Angela Vose. Are any of them here? Yep. To the podium, please. Now, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Kane and I am a resident of Birmingham Farms, 6938 Sandwood Drive. Been there for 15 years. I vehemently oppose this proposition that you've come up with at this date and time. The board present is literally giving away property. You are trading 4.6 acres for over eight acres. Do the math, that's over 3.4, give or take, acres of land for nothing. The land is to become the site of 10 homes. The original planned 4.6 acres was to have five-house development. It includes the only green space in the area where our children, local residents, use it as a park for soccer, for softball activities, and as you heard, for parades and other such things. Also, no studies at this point have been done to show how the wildlife will be affected in the proposed area. We do have a wetlands that goes through there that does feed into the Rouge. In addition, our schools are becoming maxed out and the boost center may be needed in the future for a school again. I know I have children in Connet, BHMS, and the high school. I can tell you right now, Connet and BHMS are exploding. My daughter at BHMS has over 60 kids in one PE class. It's mind-boggling. And again, if you get rid of that area around the boost center, where are these kids going to go? Where are you going to have a playground? Because you really are going to have to start thinking about, this Bloomfield Hills is booming and there's going to have to be a place to put these kids into schools because you closed elementary schools and sold or have tabled those properties. This has not been investigated thoroughly and I feel the district is giving away what few green spaces we have left in our neighborhood. That is the one green space we have. The next closest one is Connet Elementary. Now, if you can, thank you. Please table this and think about it.
Do we have Ronald Fenwick or Angela Vose?
Hi, I'm Angela. I'm Angela Vose and I'm sure most of you saw my email that I sent you. So I'm from 7262 Cathedral Drive and my property does immediately back up to the boost center. And we are in the process of building quite an extensive addition on our house, literally started 12 days ago. Had I even known about this, we probably would have considered something else. But in any case, we'll stop that for a second. We have a... We have a petition with one hundred and thirty people that have signed it, who are really very concerned. The president and vice president of our neighborhood are here tonight. And truly, you guys have been put in a very awkward position, and frankly, I don't know how you've been strong-armed to go this far with it. I really feel this is a city issue that all residents of Bloomfield should vote on. If everybody feels this strongly about this land, which I really do feel strongly about the nature center and would like to see that land preserved, but I would also like to see the booth center land preserved too, obviously. There's animals that live there. All of the residents in our neighborhood pretty much use it. Kids come and play soccer, ride bikes, you know. It's really very wildly used throughout the neighborhood. So, for people who are living elsewhere in the neighborhood to think that, oh, let's just shuck that piece of land because nobody uses it, that's just simply not true. So, you know, I feel like there's a lot, it's just kind of under the fly of night. I knew nothing about this. I literally found out about this on Saturday and have been calling people and trying to figure out really what's going on. It is an awkward and strange predicament that you guys are in. I feel bad, but we shouldn't be made to suffer. And I feel like there's other ideas and opportunities that could be explored to save both pieces of property. I truly feel like the booth center should be, it's very short-sighted to give that away. You're giving up a lot, you're giving up a million and a half dollars that could go to schools and funding, and funding of programs, and programs are being cut right now. So, maybe, you know, if you are going to get that property away, how about selling it and using those proceeds for the school district at some point in the future? But I do feel like this is a city issue and not a district issue, and I really don't feel like it's your fight to fight. I feel like it's the city's fight to fight, and all the residents should be more a part of this, and it should go on a ballot and be voted for.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ronald Fenwick? Okay, the next three people, David Cooper, Sr., Jody Harrington, and Kathleen Sheehan.
My name is Kathleen Sheehan. I live at 6922 Woodbank Drive in Birmingham Farms. And you have been already told that, you know, we understand that you're being put in a bad position, but I asked you to seriously consider the following. Put yourself in the shoes of your constituents here, who voted, many of you who, we voted you in office. And, you know, how would you feel if you learned at the last minute? I learned just on Monday, because I happened to see a sign on somebody's lawn, Deborah Janeki, that stated that there was going to be a giveaway of land. And you know, you didn't, I went to look at the agenda this evening, there was nothing that mentioned the land swap. Yet, on your website, you represent that, and I can quote from that website, it says, "The school board considers transparent operations and effective communication with all stakeholders of the district to be the utmost of importance. Agendas for all meetings are posted online." It was posted online, but there was no mention of this land swap. And that's very disconcerting. And what's equally disconcerting is the fact that you're going to, I don't know if you're aware, yes, there's a wetlands back there, there's wildlife, there's protected vegetation in the form of trillium. I don't know if you're aware of what trillium is, but it's a protected species within the state. And the bottom line is, is that as citizens, we look at this and we see a lack of transparency in this dealing. There's no responsibility by the, to the citizens here, who are looking to have, looking to you to do the right thing under the circumstances. We don't know if there was any conflict of interest, because there's no code of conduct by the township, and I don't see a code of conduct on the board's website with regard to dealings like this. Granted, again, I understand that you were not put in, you're put in a difficult position with regard to this, but nonetheless, this is very disconcerting. We, you know, people do use this site, as mentioned, and they care about it, and they want to keep it pristine, because there are not a lot of green spaces in this property and around here, except for going farther away. And I ask that you seriously consider what other people have said. Give us more information, even put it up to a vote of the voters. I mean, this is not appropriate. Put yourself in our position, how would you feel if your houses and your areas where you lived, you were put in the same situation where you weren't given an information by the people that you voted into office? It's very disconcerting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're not engaging in dialogue here, but I have to make a factual correction. This is on our, it is on our agenda. It was posted days ago. It may have been difficult.
This, excuse me.
I'm just saying.
Excuse me. The superintendent has the floor.
I observed it there. I made sure it was there. And we have copies of the resolution and motion that were part of it back here for you. I apologize if it was difficult to find. I can't explain if you had a technical glitch, but it is a legal requirement that we always meet, so it was there. I apologize if you weren't able to find it.
Good evening. My name is David John Cooper. I've lived in the township for nearly forty-three years now. I live at 4648 Brafterton Drive. That's the Williamsburg subdivision. We're near Franklin Road and Lone Pine. I've been president of the homeowners association on numerous occasions, so I speak from the perspective of a longtime resident of the township. My perspective is the following. I think there's a tendency to take the nature center for granted, I think. The fact of the matter is that it's a unique gem, and one that very few of any other communities enjoy, such as we have with the nature center. To get that additional property at the nature center and to preclude any large homes being built right within the horizon of the nature center would, will preserve the aesthetic integrity of the nature center, which I consider to be of overriding importance, not just for now, but for future generations. As opposed to taking away the luxury that a limited number of homeowners have in a different part of the township where they have some green space. We're talking about a benefit for the entire township, as well as many other communities around here use the nature center. So, were I in your position, it would be an easy decision for me. I would go for this land swap in order to preserve the integrity of the nature center indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jody Harrington?
Hi, my name is Jody Harrington. I live at 1686 Yorkshire Road in Birmingham. And environmental educators know how extremely important it is for young people and older people to get outside and be able to be in a place of peace and relaxation, and that's what the nature center provides. To have five very large homes encroaching on the nature center space is going to change the whole aspect of the nature center, and possibly it won't seem as peaceful to people. Students, all of which we're lucky enough to have, come to the center, at least from preschool to seventh grade, and other people from outside of the district, find it a place of peace. And some students, this may be their only place to find a source of benefit and for them to excel in their education in this aspect of the environment and really join this place. And we, again, would so hope that we would continue to have the few forty acres we have be unencumbered by large homes right next to us. Let me just read you some comments that people put in our guestbook as they come by. "Best day ever. I saw my first frog. I would totally come again." "Very peaceful. Best lunch spot in sixty miles. This is my happy place. A fun place for kids to explore." As well as any number of adjectives. Lovely, amazing, awesome, and we hope to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next three speakers, Blanche Wiki, Rob Reed, Nancy Reed.
Hello, my name is Blanche Wiki. My husband Brian and I have been residents of Bloomfield Township for almost forty years. Our two daughters went to school at Connet, Bloomfield Hills Middle School and Andover High School, and I went with them on every field trip that I could. My husband has been a Boy Scout leader at the Connet Troop 1022 for over thirty years. His troop does Eagle Scout projects at the nature center, and now I've been working at the nature center for twenty-five years. We love the nature center, and we walk there often. I'm also an avid bird watcher. I have identified two-hundred-and-one species of birds in Oakland County in the last four years and reported them to eBird, the citizen science database run by Cornell University. A hundred and fifty-four of these species I've found at our little nature center. E.L. Johnson Nature Center ranks eleventh in Oakland County, a huge county for bird species. I think it's amazing that our tiny nature center can supply the habitat for so many resident and migrating birds. If we lose the five acres of habitat on our south border, we're losing about fourteen percent of the food and shelter that the birds and other wildlife need. We even have a pair of great-horned owls who nest in the back of the property that may become houses. I'm sharing all this because I care about the community, our schools, and of course, our nature center. This is our only chance to protect the south side of the nature center from development. If multiple homes are built, that would forever mean water pollution into our pond from fertilizer runoff, noise pollution with lawn services and maybe dogs barking, quality of life pollution from houses and people on our border. Enlarging our nature center with this land would benefit our schoolchildren, all of our schoolchildren, as well as the surrounding community who enjoy access to our trails as the only park in Bloomfield Township.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please vote in favor of preserving our natural resources, not destroying them.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Reed. I live at 4495 Stony River Drive. Lived there for twenty years and raised four kids in that house. I have visited the booth center, what I like to call Echo Park, every week of my life and time there. It's been a great place to walk the dogs, play with the kids, have soccer games. I strongly oppose the land swap deal. Obviously, there's strong opinions on both sides. The usage of the four acres next to the nature center, to some sounds like it's going to bulldoze the nature center and close it down. It may affect a view, but I don't think it's going to adversely affect the quality of the education that the students get when they go to the nature center, which is your primary concern. And I think that what's been called a win-win deal is not a win-win. It may be a win for the nature center, it may be a win for the developer, I don't really care if it is or not, but it is no way a win for the residents of southwestern Bloomfield Township. There's a comment in the sheet you handed out about why property at Lazar, the old high school, wasn't considered. There are eighty acres there. I think a land swap deal could be done there that would not affect the ability to use that site in the future for school development, that also would not affect homeowners in any way. Right now, the proposed development is going to negatively affect people's home values and quality of life. So again, it's a difficult decision, I understand that, but I think the land swap deal is the wrong decision, and I think other opportunities for other land swaps should be considered that would not impact so many families so drastically.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nancy Reed?
Hi, I'm Nancy Reed. That was my husband. We live at the same place, 4495 Stony River Drive. I'm here to ask that the school board consider alternatives to the land swap deal. The booth center is a small, tight property with a wetlands area. The property developed at the booth center backs onto two other neighborhoods, which would be negatively impacted. Those neighborhoods were not adequately notified that this development was being proposed. Actually, the first I heard of this entire proposal was about a week and a half ago, two days before the first meeting that we had. And a neighbor of mine called me and asked me if I knew what was going on, and I had heard nothing. So, I understand that you made an effort to contact seventy-five homes, but I don't live adjacent to the booth center, but we use the booth center a lot. We go there, as my husband said, to play soccer and to walk the dogs and for our downtime. So, it is an area that's used by folks in that southeast area. And as I mentioned, there is a wetlands area there at the booth center, and there's been no impact study done in regards to this area. But there has been an impact study done at the nature center, and the township did do their due diligence, and I'm not saying I agree or not, but that there was no deleterious effect to be found from the township study. And the township does a pretty good job in checking things out. All we ask is that you give us the same consideration and that you do an impact study and you take a look at the wetlands area. Several people have stated that there are some protective species of flowers that are there. I don't know what they are, but that was mentioned actually at the meeting that was on the thirtieth. And so, let's see. I also don't understand what the rush is to push this deal through without giving us full information. And as Mr. Weiner pointed out, the picture that we got tonight was the first time we had a decent picture, but I think more information needs to be given to us. I think that there are other alternatives, as my, as other people have mentioned, the site at Lazar, there's eighty acres there, and the land is, I think, maybe a little bit more valuable than the land around the booth center, so it wouldn't need to be maybe as many acres being given over to the developer, and it wouldn't impact the neighborhoods as much. The other option would be to do a referendum and let the voters say what's important to them. And I think green space, wherever it is, is important, but I think that, you know, obviously, taking away homeowners' values and the green space land that we currently use would be a very sad thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three speakers, Deborah Logan, Dave Richter, and C. Sheehan.
My name is Connie Sheehan. I'm from 595 Crabtree.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit?
I'm sorry, Crabtree, and that's in the Foxcroft subdivision. And but for the fact that I saw the flyer that Attorney Deborah Janeki of Birmingham Farms had put out and tried to distribute to that subdivision, I wouldn't have known, because I go to this area, this green space area, all the time, all the time. Kids play there, animals, it's beautiful, it's my kind of happy space. I understand that the woman said that there was a small nature area over there on Franklin, but that's it. It's small. We can't just keep focusing all the animals down to one zeroed-in space, small area. So, I want to save them both. I think that the idea of using the land on Lazar is appropriate and letting us enjoy that which we have and have always had thus far. I am concerned about transparency here and why there isn't a code of conduct after that was brought up, because I didn't know about this and all this that we just got tonight, all these little particulars and the picture isn't so great, but I didn't know about a lot of this stuff. And I think there are a lot, and I'm speaking for a lot of homeowners that couldn't even be here tonight. There are many, many people, hundreds of people, because I've done homework besides Attorney Janeki, and people aren't happy. I would love for us to be able to save both sites and utilize Lazar land that's been torn down, the school and everything. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Dave Richter or C. Sheehan?
My name is Dave Richter. I'm at 1635
I'm at sixteen-thirty-five Hoyt Tower, been a resident since nineteen ninety-four. I love the Nature Center, I support the law and swap. It was a great surprise when I read about that in the downtown magazine. According to the article I read, that there are going to be two acres left protected and the wetland in the area that's being swapped, which I would assume protects the, I haven't seen the details yet, but that, I would assume that would protect the endangered species. It would be great if we could protect both areas, but the school district, I don't think you've ever promised anybody that any of these excess school properties are going to be protected. If we want to protect these green spaces in Bloomfield, that would take a millage and people would have to pay. So if the swap is not approved, I would, probably both properties would get developed sooner or later. The expansion of an existing natural area into several acres of woodland and meadow that is there up on that hill, that otherwise would be lost development, it protects the hill, up on that hill where we're going to have, could have another McMansion looking down in the park that everybody has to look up at, and apart from all the noise and whatever else it would cause. So when this fence comes down, separating that property from the Nature Center, it's going to add acres for all the township and the wildlife to enjoy. And this expansion also, since the Nature Center can expand opportunities for activities, these are activities enjoyed not only by our residents, the whole district, and schools, other school districts too, which actually pay. It's, that's revenue coming into, probably not a lot of money, but coming into the district. Like I say, there are a lot of, there's other vacant properties for the school, and if they have to be protected, I don't, it's, this swap is probably about the best you can do unless there's a millage to expand our green properties like West Bloomfield has parks and recreation millage. We do not. The school board, that's it, that's all we have in the township.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is C. Sheehan. After that, we would have Harry Bloom, Hetty Blatt, and Rebecca Farrington.
I'm Deborah Logan. I live at five-zero-six-nine Forest Way, and I'd like to see every space preserved, but this is what's before us this evening and what we've been following, I know I've been following for many weeks and months now. And I'm here to ask that you please vote in favor of preserving the health, ecological soundness, natural value, and community value of the E.L. Johnson Nature Center. My husband and I have been Bloomfield Township residents and homeowners since nineteen ninety. Our daughters attend in Conan, BHMS, Andover, and BHHS, excuse me. One is now in college and the other is in graduate school, both out of state, and when they visit home, the Nature Center is on their list of beloved must-go-to hometown spots. My husband and I wouldn't consider living elsewhere, and the Nature Center plays a large role in our desire to stay here. Construction on the adjacent land in question would disrupt every aspect of the center. That disruption of the natural qualities of the center would ultimately compromise the value of education in Bloomfield Hills schools. Many birds and land animals that children study and observe would move away. The water life that inspires young scientists would be negatively affected, even killed by runoff due to fertilization and weed killer. Schoolchildren on the boardwalk would hear the sounds of lawn mowers and leaf blowers instead of woodpeckers and owls, and they'd see yard crews and patio furniture instead of a muskrat swimming in front of a background of trees. The peace and life in our Nature Center are integral to instilling in our students, their responsibility for becoming stewards of our planet. If we compromise the center, we directly compromise their futures and ours. I hope that you will vote in favor of protecting the Nature Center. In doing so, you'll vote in favor of protecting the value of all our homes, our schools, and this beautiful piece of land that is our local microcosm of our planet's well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We have C. Sheehan, Harry Bloom.
Good evening, members of the board and Bloomfield Township residents. My name is Harry Bloom. I live at ten-twenty-five Glenwood Court, Bloomfield Hills. I've been a resident of Bloomfield Township for nearly forty years, and I'm here to speak in support of the land swap. I have lived within a mile and a half of the Nature Center for over thirty years. I've brought my children and now grandchildren to the center on Franklin Road for maple sugar harvest, special education programs, hikes, and fishing. My son, an Eagle Scout, made the Nature Center the focus of his Eagle Project, refurbishing trails and building birdhouses for them. So I've seen firsthand the value it brings to our community. In essence, this land swap makes right a missed opportunity from years gone by. In the past, when there was an opportunity for the school board to buy the property at thirty-three-fifty-five Franklin Road, the board demurred, basically ignoring the danger of such development and the danger that that development would create. It would be a mistake not to safeguard the future of our children and ensure the vitality of the Johnson Center. The danger of unabated fertilizer runoff from inserting five homes directly adjacent to the Nature Center Creek cannot be underestimated. It can easily be seen that taking Franklin Road out of play in the ecosphere of the Nature Center would close the opportunity forever. While I understand there may be reluctance on the part of some Wing Lake homeowners to support this initiative, it's important to remember that the Wing Lake proposal establishes a guarantee of a two-acre green and conservancy area, something which is not an option at Franklin Road location. I wholeheartedly support the plan to exchange the four-point-six acres of Franklin Road for the Wing Lake Road location. While we have seen a willingness of some political entities to shrink Nature Centers across the western part of the U.S., expanding the Nature Center is one way to make a statement that our children are more important. I urge you to protect them while we still can, and let us not forget that each and every one of our township's schools bring their students to the Nature Center and take advantage of it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hetty Blatt?
Good evening. My name is Hetty Blatt. I reside at one-one-six-zero Park Place Court. I've worked in education for over thirty years, and as a retired Community Relations Director for the Troy School District, I know firsthand how difficult tonight's decision may be for you. Seldom do boards of education have to make life and death decisions, but this one could be just that to the delicate ecosystem and overall unspoiled environment of the Johnson Nature Center. No board of education or any elected body ever wants to see this many people at a meeting or anger a portion of its constituency. However, tonight's vote to approve the land swap must be made for future generations and for the greater good. For those unaware, while it may seem like good news that a land swap agreement was proposed, what was not publicized was the not-so-small print in the consent agenda, crafted and approved by the Bloomfield Board Trustees. Many saw the trustees' televised vote and heard their win-win statements, thinking everything was all right and settled once and for all. But what we did not hear in public were the key points of this consent judgment, which, should an agenda, excuse me, should an agreement not be reached with the school district, would allow the developer to build on lot number six, which directly abuts the Johnson Nature Center on Franklin Road. In addition, it's my understanding the township would be dismissed from the developer's lawsuit, and there would be no recourse, he could build on lot number six unfettered. The Johnson Nature Center is a remarkable jewel in our community. It is a rare park-like setting here in Bloomfield Township. If the land swap is not approved, lot number six development will cause permanent environmental destruction to the Nature Center's fragile, precious ecosystem, including displacement of fish and wildlife, distress to plants, trees, and water due to construction upheaval, the removal of seventy to one-hundred-plus trees, not to mention scrub, and pesticides in the lake from runoff, as well as yet-to-be-known consequences that may become a reality in the future. This would be so wrong on so many different levels. Approximately fourteen thousand K-12 students visit the Nature Center per year. Most are from Bloomfield and Birmingham and visit as part of school-sponsored field trips that align to their curricular studies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Your time is up.
Time?
Yeah.
Can I just go to my very last time? Thank you very much. I have a copy of my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rebecca Farruja, and then after her, Terry Cunahan, Leslie Landau, Linda Tuthill.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Farruja, and I live at seven-two-oh-one Wing Lake Road, so right next door to the Booth Center. I've lived there for two years. I have two young boys, ages eight and five, who both attend Conan Elementary. As people before me have said, we made the decision to move to Bloomfield, to get out of a congested area, somewhere with a reputable school district, and also because of the green space around that property. We've invested a lot in it, like the woman doing the addition, put a lot of money into the house since we've moved into it and plan to do more of that. You can imagine how my heart dropped when I received that letter in the mail on November thirtieth. I feel, as others before me have, that two days' notice is not, was not very sufficient to give people the opportunity to attend the meeting last week. Lots of people I've spoken to in the neighborhood have no idea this is happening. My neighbor's here, and the only reason she found out about it was because I went door to door. So I'm extremely, as a communications professor, I'm extremely disappointed in the poor communication about this deal. And while I understand, and again, like others before me, would love to see a solution that preserve both spaces, I do not agree with the gentleman who said that the people in this neighborhood have had this luxury of some green space. I don't think green space in Bloomfield Township should be a luxury. It should be, we should be trying to preserve the green space that we have. And as a woman before me said about the peacefulness of the Nature Center, I think we should all be granted a little bit of peace in our neighborhoods. I also agree with other comments that the wetlands, first of all, the wetlands is not going to be protected in this deal that we know of, and that a study has not been done to understand how this will affect the wildlife in our area. I do not think the deer, we have, we have a pond on our property, we have blue herons that come by, deer, all kinds of things. I do not believe that that will not, that those animals and that wildlife will not be affected with this deal because of the preservation of two acres of green space. So I strongly oppose this swap.
Thank you very much. Terry Cunahan?
I'm Terry Cunahan. I live at thirteen-seventy-one Club Drive. I also own the property, my wife and I, Luanne, at thirteen-sixty-one Club Drive. Both are about a five-minute easy walk to the Nature Center. We've been in that neighborhood for thirty years, and ten years before that elsewhere in the school district. The last twenty years, I've also been the president of the Island, Lower Long, and Forest Lake Property Owners Association. That includes about three-hundred property owners in that immediate area, including practically every property owner along Franklin, between Long Lake Road and Hickory Grove Road. We are unanimously in favor of the land swap. We see the possibility of a major development on that adjacent property to be incredibly deleterious and destructive to the Nature Center in the form that we know it today. Several of my neighbors have sent you folks' letters, you on the board, talking about the downline effects. I'd like to focus a little bit more on just the construction and development. Being a contractor myself, I can't imagine how the Nature Center could possibly survive the destruction that will happen in that nearby lot, developing five property sites. I just don't imagine there'll be anything left. So accordingly, in accordance with the spirit of the consent agreement that the township reached, we're in clear agreement, that the spirit and intent of the consent agreement, that the Bloomfield Hills School Board approve the land swap and thereby preserve the Johnson Center, Nature Center in its current state as a nature preserve, a natural ecosystem, and a true jewel in our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leslie Landau?
Hi, my name is Leslie Landau. I'm at four-six-three-one Breferton Drive. Bloomfield Hills students are living in a community that is hemorrhaging green space. As I understand, at BHs years ago purchased all sorts of land for schools, recreation, and nature. Land was well distributed with a green space parcel near everyone. A wise move, because obviously, children need land for school, playground, sports, and nature to thrive. Parents as well benefit physically, mentally, emotionally as well from green space, as piles of studies show. How great that smart people bought enough, and well-dispersed land, close enough for all students to walk to. At the, at the time, the school district owning green space made sense. After all, who cares whether we paid school district taxes or township taxes to buy the land? But fast forward to today, whoops and yikes. Now it's a problem, because now the school district is selling off so much property. Hickory Grove is gone, as is the land near Long Lake Road and Franklin, Lazzar High School is gone, and what remains are schools whose use will be so dense with official sports use that there will be little time and space for children to lift up logs and find salamanders underneath them, catch polywogs, butterflies, play freely, take risks, and decompress. Aside from E.L. Johnson, all publicly accessible nature is pretty much gone from the township. E.L. Johnson is a critical remnant of nature in Bloomfield Township that benefits every single student in the school district. It is a critical educational hub for observing and learning about how our planet functions. Students observe, record, report on the water cycle, the carbon cycle, the migration of birds, the pollution, or health of a river and lake. Hundreds are educated outside the classroom, outside. They're educated outside, which is such a special thing. Many kids can't go to sleepaway camp, and ELJ is the closest thing that they have. It's one of the only decent habitats that can support a, for wide variety of neighboring or native birds in the township, and it needs to remain as big as it is, or else it'll, it just won't have the integrity it needs to have to support all the wildlife it does.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just five, a bank of five houses right up to the lake will destroy it irreversibly forever. So I urge you to support E.L. Johnson Nature Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Tuthill, please. After Linda will be Jim Morgan, Jacqueline White, and Paul Corey. Yes, Linda, thank you.
Hi, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Linda Tuthill. I live at seven-one-seven-one White Pine Drive. I have lived here for fifteen years. I moved here from the great state of Vermont, and when my husband and I were deciding where we were going to live, we're moving our four children here, Bloomfield Hills. Great schools, yay. The Nature Center, what a great program that is offered through our school system. Then we chose our neighborhood. Well, of course, I live in the neighborhood that we're discussing the land swap in. I have only found out about this tonight. I'm very surprised about that. I have four graduates, Andover, Lazzar, and Bloomfield Hills High School. I thought, I'm all done, I don't have to be paying attention much to what's going on with the school board. I still get some of the emails, I get the emails from the high school, but boy, was I ever wrong. I also feel so badly that we're pitting citizens of the community against each other. This is not how we do things in this community.
I'm sorry, this lady has the floor, please.
That's okay. I'm not as eloquent as many people here, I don't really have anything prepared, but as I said, I felt that it was my duty to come up and say that I am opposed to the land swap, and I urge you to try to find an alternative. It sounds like you've done a ton of work already, but I urge you to oppose it, to table this decision tonight, and to maybe reach out to more community. I look at that piece of property for my home, I receive nothing in the mail, no communication at all. So I'm opposed to it, and thank you very much for your time. So, I'm opposed to it, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Morgan.
Good evening. Jim Morgan, 6705 Timber Ridge Drive in Bloomfield, Birmingham Farms subdivision. I've been a resident there for a little bit over 15 years. I'm not opposed to the Earl Johnson Nature Center. In fact, I've visited many times with school and with scouts with my children. I hope that the school district and the township are able to acquire the land in question by other means to preserve the Nature Center. But I do oppose the land swap. And as many of the residents have come up, and some of my neighbors have talked about, you know, the green space, you know, when I moved to Bloomfield Township 15 years ago, I stopped in the township offices, and I talked with David Payne, the former superintendent of the township. And he said that, I asked where the parks were. He said, "That's right. We do not have parks." But when the township was setting up the school district, they acquired more land than it was necessary so that the playgrounds and the green space of the schools could do double duty as the parks for the community. But fast forward to 1978, the Headley Amendment, that, that practice had to stop of the township supporting the property of the school. Dollar for dollar, the township gave to upkeep the property, the state took away from the school district. So, that ended that practice. Now, as stewards of the school district, you guys are stewards of our parkland, too. I oppose giving away any land, whether it's the Lazar school land, the land from the Booth School, or any of the schools that would be closed and, you know, seen as no longer needed. We need to maintain the green space that we have for our community. The green space that is behind the Booth School, that's near my subdivision. I've been there with my children. It's a quick walk, the stroller. We ride our bikes. My son, all this past summer, practiced kicking the football years ago. My daughters and I were up there playing soccer. It has meaning to our community, not just the people who live near or on the property in question. It's a jewel for our neighborhood, just the same as the Earl Johnson property is a jewel for our community as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Jacqueline White.
Hello, my name is Jackie White. My husband and I live at 7171 Wing Lake Road, and we have lived there for 30 years. We have five children that we have raised there. I walk every day with my dog. I have played with my children, and my grandchild that was just born, I plan to take him to the area behind my house. This is an area that is right behind my house. And in listening to several people recount the damage and the destruction that would be done to the nature at the Johnson Center, I'm sure it struck all of you, as it did me, that that is exactly the damage that would be done to our neighborhood green space and to our area as we go outside and try to walk in a peaceful, quiet, natural setting, as I do every day. I would no longer be able to do that. And just as I respect the Johnson Center, as anyone would, I feel that we aren't being given that same respect for our natural area. When you have to go to the zoo to see animals, as our natural areas are diminished and the animals are driven out into the roads and killed, all that's left for us is the Johnson Center, which isn't right. Our kids shouldn't have to go to a tiny little area to experience the nature, the beauty of what's there for us, if we are smart enough to preserve it for them. And that's what you would be taking away. You would be taking away a beautiful, natural area from the residents, and not just from the ones that border on that property. I see people coming from all over, from Franklin, because those people are no longer able to play with their dogs in the park. So, they come to our park, and we welcome them. We love them to come to our park and play there, and to bring their kids from all over and play with our kids. I think it's really disrespectful to make it sound as though the natural space in the Johnson Center, which would not be impacted, you're not taking land away from the Johnson Center. You're building around a lake, which has already been said it would not impact it to any great degree.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Please consider what I've said. I'm speaking from my heart.
Thank you. Paul Corey, please.
Good evening to the board members. My name is Paul Corey. I'm of 3975 Brookside Drive. I'm also here on behalf of a client of mine that lives directly across from what would be Lot 6, the proposed development next to the Nature Center. Just for the benefit of everybody here, the board is in an unenviable position. This isn't their own making. This is something that came by way of Mr. Noson having the right to develop his property. He has applied for the proper permits through the township. Perhaps much of the beef we have may be with the township, and unfortunately, it's fallen in your lap. I know that Mr. Glass, Mr. Bagley, and perhaps the balance of the board has made a lot of efforts through their attorneys and other folks by way of not directly being involved in the litigation at hand, but at least around it, trying to come up with alternative measures, which included getting some grant money, which either by function of time, or the ask price that Mr. Noson is asking for is just simply not feasible. The consent judgment that has been drafted between the township and the developer says what it says. It's available. It's public record. You can take a look at it. For those that are concerned about what may happen next, Mr. Noson, the developer, still has to go through the regular hoops of jumping through to get the Booth property blessed and developed through the ordinary course. However, the consent judgment, if, as agreed to, if the board does not take the land swap and bless it, agree to it, the development is going to be deemed approved already with respect to the E.L. Johnson Nature Center. As a product of Bloomfield Hills Schools, I went to Way Elementary, Bloomfield Hills Middle School, and Lazar High School, and I'm now a resident of Bloomfield Hills. I would advise you to do anything and everything in your power to maintain the aesthetic and ecological integrity of the Nature Center. If you combine that with what the consent judgment says, unless you agree to this land swap, the E.L. Johnson Nature Center is going to be irreparably harmed. And I don't mean to disparage anything that anybody else has said from the properties affected on Booth. Effectively, we all have the same argument. But really, we're here as a function of process, which is not the board's fault, not even really the Board of Trustees' fault, not Mr. Noson's fault. Everybody's acting in accordance with the law. And I would simply advise that, you know, we, you've been dealt a sorry hand, but we need to preserve that which we can preserve immediately and fully endorse that land swap. And in Mr. Glass, in your defense, the agenda was available. It is available. It's hard to find sometimes, but it's been there. I appreciate the efforts of the board and their attorney so far.
Thank you, sir.
And I fully endorse the land swap and the alternative to table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next three names, Keith Herting, Raphael Riop, and Deb Bonerji.
I'm Keith Herting. I live at 25074 Glenhome Court. I use the Booth Center almost every day. I'm stunned, quite frankly, that there has been such short notice on what's been going on here. Dr. Glass, I think that was your name, the other night, made it pretty clear what your vote was going to be tonight. So, I can't really argue with it. There's not really any point. So, I'm very disappointed that there's been such a lack of creativity in what you're doing, because there is such limited green space of not getting with the township and making parks out of all this. I'm just shocked that you would sell any of this property rather than preserve it. And so, I'm very disappointed. And secondly, when I originally came, that was what I came to say. But I was sitting here waiting for the meeting to come up. I just got my phone out, did a little Googling, and I was surprised to see that the schools really are not very good here. And I think, I'm also stunned that you're not paying more attention to that. Newest U.S. News World report said that less than 47% of your kids graduate from this high school college-ready. Yes, they did, Dr. Glass. That's what they said. I can show it to you right now.
I, I...
You're shaking your head? No, I'm just correcting.
Before you finished your sentence, I made an assumption. I apologize. I didn't...
And secondly, people have mentioned that there's two acres of land that would be preserved in the land swap, and the developer the other night indicated that was not the case. Maybe, maybe not. So, when you're saying that that's going to happen, that's not accurate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Raphael Riop.
Good evening.
Gura.
Raphael Rego, 25080 Glenhome Court. I'm, I've been living here since 2003 in Bloomfield Township. I've coached young girls soccer, young girls and boys, and I've assisted with Lazar and Andover with their sport programs. I've taken many kids at least three times a year to the Nature Center. It's, it's, it needs to be defended. It's extremely valuable, okay? I wish I could go more, but I don't live close enough to go more, okay? However, I do not think this is a good idea. You should not do this for that small parcel of land. I am very close to the Lazarus family, so my daughter's really good friends with her daughter, with Hannah, okay? So, we're family. I go there a lot. I see, I know where they're going to put those houses. And the people that come out here and tell you it's going to be completely destroyed are giving you wrong information. Please seek out more information. That's all I ask. When we did find out about this, I asked the superintendent, "What are the ramifications of what you're going to do to the families at Echo Park?" And you can see, it's a very emotional thing here. Okay, a lot of people haven't been told. It seems a little decisive, divisive, the way this information's been trickling down to people, and things are going to be taken away. It's the only green they have. And a lot of people come to this area to get out of the city, to get out of congested areas. Putting 10 families there is going to heavily congest that area. It's going to do away with the deer, with the animals, with all these birds. And when you see people here come over and talk about the Nature Center, and they don't talk the equivalent of what they're going to do to Echo Park, it's preserve versus eliminate, and this needs to be in your mind. You're going to eliminate, okay? And that's what's really touching on these people. It's not just this area. It's, there's, this is all we have. This is all we have. And from someone who will do anything for that Nature Center, this is not the right direction. If you were to sit there and tell us all that you were going to take Booth Center and Echo Park and make something of it, and give more education for adults, and use the surrounding environment, not turn it into an Echo Center, but really make something of it, man, we would be so happy right now. That would be a really good positive way to go about it.
Thank you, sir.
Deb Bonerji, and after her, Brian Conchas in Salya Vadvalli.
Good evening. My name is Deb Bonerji. I live in 7433 Wing Lake Road, south of the property that is being swapped or is being offered at this time. The advantage of speaking at the end, you heard all these opinions, all these things, and you can see the emotions of people. And since I live right next to the land where it would be built, you could understand I'm going to oppose it, and I will. But before I go any further, one thing I don't agree with, which is giving up land. Giving up land and building homes is what is being done everywhere. Giving up land and in Nature Center or the place that you are swapping with is going to hurt someone. Nature Center would help, as everybody pointed out, entire Bloomfield Township. That's our Nature Center, right? This little parcel of land is our Nature Center. Now, if I am going to do it for all Bloomfield Township, I would think it would be some grant or some millage, a some way of raising the fund and paying off the builder and preserving that four acres that we are questioning or switching around. Let's not...
This gentleman has the floor, please.
Let's not give up land for land. Let's try to keep the land and see if we can raise the fund. We raised a lot of funds. Even this school, we had millage passed to do their school again. I think people will be willing to preserve the land next to the Nature Center. I will vote for it. So, instead of voting for it today, like the gentlemen sounded two or three before me, like, it seems like you have to sign it today, or otherwise, it's not going to happen, and they're going to put up the houses. That means I don't know why we are meeting here today. I'm going to propose that we raise fund and try to acquire the land from them and not hurt the people a corner of the township. They are also residents, but the whole township will be helped by this preservation of the Nature Center.
Thank you, sir.
Let's get the money from everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Conchas.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brian Conchas of 3792 West Pemberton. I wholly support the land swap. One of the things you've heard here tonight is that if you do not pass this, it will be immediately deemed that the land next to E.L. Johnson Nature Center will be developed. This is the stop, this is the part where you stop that. The arguments you've heard from people tonight are arguments for the Board of Trustees, and you are in an unenviable position. But your opportunity to stop the development of that land is now. The arguments that can be made on both sides can be made to the trustees, and that has another opportunity there. Again, we're here as part of a process. But ultimately, your job is for the education of the students of Bloomfield Township, and it's the E.L. Johnson Nature Center that provides multiple opportunities for all of our children, no matter where we live, no matter where our properties abut, no matter where we visit green space. So, for that, for the, excuse me, for the opportunities provided to our students, our children, I support, I support this land swap. Prevent the development near E.L. Johnson, save it for our children. And if we can fight this, any of the giving of our lands, do it with the Board of Trustees. So, please, pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Salya Vadvalli. Sorry for my mispronunciation.
Hi, my name is Shailaja Yadavalli, and I live at 3456 Franklin Road. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give my opinion here. The Nature Center serves all our children, not just the children of people who live around it. Yes, I do live very close to the Nature Center, and construction on that property is going to affect us in many ways. But I want to think of it as the big picture. It is for the children and their education, for their benefit. And we can all have small areas where we want our stuff preserved. And this is not a great choice. I agree with all the other speakers. It is pretty hurtful for them. I can see that. And it's a difficult choice for you, and wish we didn't have to come to this stage. But we have to think of the greater good, and preserving that property, the Johnson Center, and enhancing it in any way that we can is a better choice than giving it up for our children. And as the previous speaker said... said, we are, you are entrusted with the education of the children. And if there is a way to do something to preserve both pieces of land, that will be the best solution. But if it's not possible, then I would say that the swap is our only choice. But it is a very difficult and hard choice that I would, uh, I endorse that. Um, but I think we have to think about the greater good instead of a small piece of land that would definitely affect the people, uh, who are living around it. So, I urge you to, um, come up with a different solution if you can. If not, then I agree with the land swap. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last card, Kai Cooper.
I'm Kai Cooper. Um, I live, uh, three-seven-nine-zero, West Pemberton Road. Um, there are two unique park, part of the school district, I think. One is the nature center, the other one is the Boris Farm. And the kids in every single grade enjoys those two places greatly. Every single year, they have field trips over there. And my kids still love nature center. They went to nature center for the summer camp. Even now, they're volunteering over there. So, um, I, I heard the argument from both sides tonight. Um, since the Booth Center property is on the table right now, and there is a question here. The question is whether the other eight acres near the Booth Center will get developed sooner or later, regardless of whether the nature center get developed. If yes, that is a very strong argument for us to save the nature center while we can. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Um, I have, uh, been, uh, asked if I would entertain a frontally amendment to, uh, change the order of our board business this evening?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to propose that we move Board Business eleven-B, which is the request to authorize the administration to execute, uh, agreement for a land exchange ahead of A. So, um, I'd like to move the B, uh, earlier in the agenda, please.
Is there any objection?
Thank you.
We will move, we will change the order then. Um, so the, uh, item on our board business next is the resolution to authorize the administration to execute the agreement for a land exchange. Intervene motion?
I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to execute an agreement to exchange a portion of the property located at seventy-two-seventy-three Wing Lake Road, owned by the district, approximately eight-point-oh-two acres, for all of the three-three-five Franklin Road, owned by NVTN Acquisitions LLC, approximately four-point-five-eight acres.
Is there support?
Support.
Support from Mr. Politeer. Um, at this time, I think we'd like to invite, uh, Dr. Glass. Does one, do you wanna invite, uh, Mr. Sunquist forward?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to, um, invite, uh, our attorney, Rick Sunquist, uh, who helped, um, put this proposed, uh, land swap agreement together. Um, and invite him to just, uh, give you a little bit more background. You have the background, um, that I've given you on the agenda, also here in paper, and allow him to just sort of, you know, give you any additional background. Um, while he's coming, just wanna thank all of our residents for their thoughtful comments, and particularly the, the, uh, understanding that the district has, you know, been in a less than ideal situation here and trying to find, you know, the best way forward, um, given the circumstances at hand. Mr. Sunquist, hi.
Hi. Um, good evening, Board, and good evening, residents of Bloomfield Township. Uh, my name's Rick Sunquist. I'm counsel for Bloomfield Hills School District with respect to this project, and I'm here to give a outline of the purchase agreement and a little history and background as to how we got here. Um, the board is, in fact, faced with some tough decisions, but over the past six, seven, eight months, as counsel, we have reviewed all manner of things to attempt to resolve this situation in a different manner. We've reviewed litigation options on behalf of the school district. We've reviewed and discussed with various people at the Michigan DNR, Michigan Land Grant Trust Funds, which would perhaps have eliminated the need to do a land swap. Those options were not available and certainly not within the time required. We've considered various purchase options, but we're put in a tough, uh, tough position because the Hakims have sold their property, which is Lot Six, to NVTN Acquisition. This purchase occurred in late two thousand fifteen, early two thousand sixteen. Shortly thereafter, the developer, as he had a right to do, prepared a site plan, which was submitted to Bloomfield Township. Bloomfield Township is one of the most difficult places to get projects approved. The plan was reviewed for many, many months, but eventually it went before the planning commission for approval. Dozens, I don't know, perhaps even a hundred people showed up to oppose it. Ultimately, the planning commission did not approve and did not recommend that the project move forward on Lot Six. Mr. Noson, on behalf of NVTN, had the right to pursue a decision before the township board, and he pursued that option. The board, also faced with large numbers of people in opposition who wanted to protect the nature center, the board, the board voted no with respect to the, uh, plat, uh, and land vision that the developer was pursuing. The developer then pursued his legal rights to file an appeal in the Oakland County Circuit Court. That case is still pending before Judge O'Brien. There are strict time limits of the court rules in order to file briefs, file the record, and to file responsive briefs. The petitioner here, Terry Noson, NVTN Acquisitions, timely filed their appeal brief. The time for the township to file their response brief has gone by. However, there may be some understanding on the part of the court to give some additional time. My point here is we've reached a deadline with respect to a decision by the board. If the board votes this down, the court case will continue. Uh, my expectation is, and my prediction is, that the developer will prevail and the development will proceed on Lot Six. I've reviewed the briefs. They're very well done. I'm, I'm assuming the township could and perhaps would file a responsive brief that could be very persuasive. But in the end, I think there's a likelihood of success on behalf of the developer. Therefore, a decision has to be made tonight, uh, in my opinion, one way or another with respect to this purchase agreement. Over the past couple of months, we have spent an inordinate amount of time attempting to come up with a possible resolution that could preserve the property on Lot Six. We've developed a purchase agreement, which has taken a couple of months to negotiate, and it wasn't until about three or four days ago that we actually came to a final proposed agreement, which is now currently sitting in, in front of you. The Doyle Center consists of approximately eighteen-point-one-two acres. Out of that eighteen acres, approximately eight-point-oh-four acres would be, uh, transferred to NVTN Acquisitions. In return, school district would acquire four-point-six acres, it's four-point-six-oh-one acres, which is Lot Six adjacent to the nature center. In connection with this process, there are various timelines that have to be met. If the board were to vote in favor of this today, a purchase agreement could be signed as soon as tomorrow. Once a purchase agreement is signed, there's a sixty-day due diligence period. District would be able to review all the due diligence we need with respect to Lot Six: title, survey, environmental. Also, NVTN, uh, Acquisition would have a similar right with respect of this property, uh, adjacent to the Doyle Center. As part of that process, they would have to conduct a survey. They would have to do wetlands review. They would have to do soil tests and all the things that developers do. If NVTN determines that the Doyle Center property is not suitable for the development, then the purchase agreement is terminated and the case goes back to the circuit court. If the district, in their sixty-day due diligence, decides not to close, then the developer will have the right to develop Lot Six. Based upon the due diligence conducted to date by the developer, I'm not anticipating any issues, including environmental issues with respect to the purchase of Lot Six by the district. As part of this process, we have had discussions with the township. We've attempted to come up with ways that could be as protective as possible to the adjoining landowners here. And what we've come up with is, in connection with the eight acres that would be transferred to NVTN, there would be a two-acre open space on the north side of the property. This is the most heavily wooded portion of the property. In addition, the accessway from Cathedral Drive, which is part of the plat from, I think, the nineteen-sixties, that would remain, and that accessway would remain. Uh, concern to us and concern to the township is what would happen to the approximately five-point-three acres of land, which consists of the ball fields and other park areas. As part of this transaction, as part of closing, there would be an open space easement, which would be applied against that property. And unless and until the school district decided to use that property for school purposes, then that land would remain in its current state. And that's, that's an important factor here. So, it's not just two acres of open space. It's an additional five acres with respect to the ball fields. And a very large number of people use those ball fields. Now, if the school district were to decide that they need to expand, um, then those five acres could be used for a new elementary school, an expansion of the current school, um, or what have you. We felt that was important to retain that right, and as part of it, we are retaining ten acres, which is the minimum we need to retain under the zoning ordinance to maintain the school facility. So, we're attempting to keep the school district options as open as possible and yet retain and protect, uh, the open areas that many of the folks around here are concerned about. As part of this transaction, there is a right of first offer. If, within the next twenty years, the school district decides to, uh, close Booth Elementary, they decide to sell the property, then the developer would have a right of first offer, which means the school district would notify Mr. Noson's company. School district would say, "We need X amount of dollars on the following terms," and he would have an opportunity to match it. If he doesn't, then the school district can do whatever they prefer to do, which, uh, in the past, has typically been an RFP process. Within, uh, after twenty years, that right of first offer disappears. Once we get through the sixty-day due diligence process, there is approximately a hundred-and-fifty days in which the developer has to submit a site plan to the township. Uh, and then under the consent order, there's an additional period of time that the township has to, uh, make approvals. All of this is on a somewhat expedited, uh, timeframe, and this is what the developer has negotiated with the township. We were not a party to the lawsuit. We've attempted to, uh, stay on top in terms of communications with the township, but ultimately, that's the agreement that was reached between the developer and the township to settle the case. Any questions?
So, this is not a public forum. This is just a board. Now, this is the time for the board to talk with each other. So, we're, the public comment part of the beginning is, is completed, and now it's time for the board to have a discussion. Do, are there any questions at this time for Mr. Sunquist?
You are not allowed to speak unless the chairman gives you-
This is not a public forum. This is not a public meeting.
This is an official meeting of the Board of Education. If you were not given the floor by the chairman, you may not speak. If you do not wish to abide by those rules, you are free to leave.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to, uh, ask, um, board members if you have, um, questions or wanna discuss what issues you wanna discuss about this motion that's been put on, put on the floor. We have a motion before us. And, Dr. Glass, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
I, I just wanted, you know, it's a complicated, uh, it's a lot to take in. It's a lot to take in. And I just want to, um, clarify or, or make sure we're clear about the open space provision and the intention of that. Um, Mr. Sunquist did a good job of explaining the relationship between the two acres and the remaining acres.
And then, is my microphone on?
No.
No. My microphone just gotta wait to, uh, yeah, we just gotta get the mic back. Sorry. Jake's way off.
You're back.
We're back. Are we back?
Yep.
All right. So, uh, i- in, I, I think it's important to state from the outset that, um, uh, when we, we have the two acres, and then the intention is to, to keep all of the other acreage as it is currently being used. So, um, we have no intention to, at this time, we, I don't have a crystal ball. I'm just being, you know, really transparent. I don't have a crystal ball and know what, uh, future board might do in ten or fifteen or twenty or thirty or forty years. But I want to reassure anyone who's listening and also, you know, reiterate for this board that our intention is to operate the Doyle Center as it's operated currently. Um, there's no plan to do anything differently. We enjoy having residents use the ball fields and walk their dogs and use the parks. Um, and the intention of this pres- this open space preservation agreement is to, um, you know, put the two acres in there certainly and then agree to use it as is in the remainder. Now, the, we put in there a contingency about having, had, if it ever, if we ever decided to sell it, because you don't know what's gonna happen in thirty, forty, fifty years. Um, or the ability to expand, you know, if we decided we needed to add a little space on the back or something. But I wanna assure everyone, there is no intention, at this point, with the knowledge I have, we're, we've invested in that building. We've moved our entire central office there. We've torn down the old central office. We're gonna tear that down across from the high school. Um, it would be a poor investment to do anything, you know, differently. And we have no, we have no, um, intention to do anything different with the fields that are out there. So, uh, the, the idea here is exclusive of the acreage being, um, considered in this agreement for the ten homes, um, the rest of the property is expected to continue to be operated just as it is today with the same access you have today. Uh, little league teams using it, people walking their dogs, people taking walks, what have you. Um, it, should it ever be sold, because I don't have a crystal ball, I had to have, there needed to be a provision in there that would clarify that there would be protection then available for those remaining acres. So, if, if we sold the rest of it, the whole thing can't be developed. There will be those five acres in addition to the two acres, right, Rick?
That's correct.
So, seven acres will be there in perpetuity. And so, I, I just wanna make that clear for people to understand that that was, that was the intent. We understand that this is an impact and being put in this spot. The question is, what can we do to mitigate that impact and ha- make sure residents, uh, who live there continue to have as much access as possible? And, uh, even if they're, the rest of the lot, land were sold, there aren't that many more homes you could put on there because, uh, seven-plus acres will be, will be, would be made then, uh, available in perpetuity there. So, um, that's just an important feature. And I heard, uh, part of the reason is I heard some gasps when I heard something about if it were ever sold in the future. I just feel you have, you have to say straight up. There's no intention to do that. But in, in the- But on the other hand, you know, there may be future boards and future superintendents in these chairs, and we had to look out for the future there, make sure that that land would be protected in that eventuality. And again, we intend to operate it as we currently do. So, there was been a lot of information I've heard as people are getting their heads around this. I want to make sure people understand, you know, that that aspect of it particularly, because it's very germane to the concerns expressed by our residents living near our central office there. Hope that helps, helps everybody understand.
Thanks. Mr. Bank?
Thank you. We have been discussing this for months amongst ourselves. We have been investigating this for months. We've discussed this with Rick multiple times. We've diligently received and reviewed emails and other communications from the community. And frankly, 99% of what we heard tonight, we've heard before, we've discussed before, and we've vetted all of these different considerations. Where I stand on this is no surprise to anybody up here, because we've discussed this before, and I'm not opposed to conserving the south side of the pond at the Nature Center. But the land swap, again, I reiterate to you guys, is not the right solution. We should not be approving this tonight, in my opinion.
Mr. Bank has the floor. Mr. Bank has the floor.
Yeah. We're the fiduciaries of the Booth Center, and for the reasons, just focusing on the Booth Center alone, in that, in and of itself, I think we should vote no on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board comments?
For myself, I feel very strongly, I can relate to both sides. I happen to live in property that backs up to Bloomfield Open Hunt Club, and I've lived there for 30 years. And for 25 years, I had beautiful forests behind me. And then they mowed down the forest and put in a polo field, and then they didn't have a success with that, and there's been a development going. And so this winter will be my first winter, first time in the last few weeks where I could look through my woods into somebody else's pool and backyard. And the wildlife of my neighborhood has been impacted. So I am very sensitive to what residents to the Booth Center are concerned about. I certainly can relate to, and living with that kind of an impact. I certainly had not anticipated, when I bought next to a hunt club, that that would be happening to me. So I appreciate that. I live in the city of Bloomfield Hills, and the city of Bloomfield Hills does not have any parklands either. And my husband and my family have enjoyed the Nature Center for over 30 years as well. And so I feel, I have been torn, as I've considered this issue at great length. But I, for me, when I sit down and I try to weigh all of the factors involved here, we have done the best we could to protect open spaces here at the, at the Booth Centers so that there will be continued to be playing fields and space for, for the wildlife in the area. And so, I really feel my first obligation as a school board member is to be steward of the educational properties and opportunities for our students, and that protecting the Nature Center is a high priority in my mind. I do believe that there will be significant impact by having five houses built on that property at Lot 6. So, as I've really thought about it at great length and weighed the impact in both areas, I really feel that supporting the land swap is the right thing to do at this time.
Anybody else? In case I'll call the motion. All in favor of the land swap, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Any abstaining? Motion is approved, six to one. Thank you very much. Moving on to our next board action.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. The President is trying to conduct the board meeting.
So we're moving on to our next item of board business, which is the item resolution regarding the School Finance Research Collaborative. Do we have a motion?
Yes, please, Madam President.
Mr. Barron?
Yes. Excuse me. I move that the Bloomfield Hills Schools support the School Finance Research Collaborative and its efforts to determine the true cost of educating all Michigan public school students.
Do I have support for the motion?
Support.
Support for Mr. Politeer. And ask for the screen at this time. I think I hear a screen. We're going to be hearing a video regarding the School Finance Research Collaborative at this time. All right. Very good.
It's a good screen, but it's a slow screen.
And show the video, please.
We know the cost of a gallon of milk, a new car, or a new computer. But what does it cost to educate a child? The fact is, here in Michigan, the answer is, we don't know. The School Finance Research Collaborative is a broad-based bipartisan group of business leaders and education experts from Metro Detroit to the U.P. who agree it's time to change the way Michigan schools are funded. The collaborative has brought together top industry experts to determine the cost of student achievement for all Michigan students by performing Michigan's first-ever comprehensive school adequacy study. Adequacy studies have been performed in more than 30 other states over the past 15 years. While some research has been done in Michigan, a comprehensive adequacy study using multiple methodologies has never been performed here. Our research examines important cost issues, including factors like preschool, poverty, special education, English language learners, charter schools, and career and technical education, and factors in schools which are geographically isolated. Districts with high concentrations of special needs, at-risk, or high-poverty students have different costs than others with fewer high-need populations. The collaborative has enlisted the country's top two research firms on school finance to produce the best, most comprehensive, most accurate information using multiple methodologies. This adequacy study will be completed by early 2018. The results will be shared publicly with Michigan policymakers, stakeholders, educators, and the public at large. Today, Michigan is near the bottom in education performance, so there's never been a more critical time to complete a comprehensive adequacy study in Michigan that answers the question, "What does it cost to educate a child?" And while the answer today here in Michigan is, "We don't know," we do know the cost of doing nothing and continuing the status quo.
Thank you. So the screen can go up. So, school boards across the state of Michigan are being asked to approve a resolution in support of the work of the Research Collaborative. It is important, as we move forward, we know that the school funding in Michigan has continued to be a more urgent concern, and this is the best opportunity we have had in a very long time to try to address and be able to show our legislators what the issues really are and find a better way to address it. And so, it is important, I believe, that we support the work of the collaborative. The report will be presented to the Oakland County School Board on January 24th, to our School Boards Association. It will be one of the first opportunities for the public to be hearing about the results of the report, and so I do hope you all will be marking your calendars to be able to come to that meeting that evening on January 24th. But I do recommend this motion to you at this time. Other board members want to speak to it?
Yeah. Madam President, I would, the resolution is pretty lengthy, but I would like, if that's permissible, to do kind of an executive summary of it.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas Michigan ranks 32nd in student achievement nationwide, according to recent research, and whereas the Governor's 21st Century Education Commission states that the urgency could not be greater regarding the falling K-12 performance, further stating that Michiganders underperform their peers, ranking 41st on fourth-grade reading performance nationally. And whereas the commission further stated that Michigan needs to efficiently distribute resources, and efficient distribution requires a transparent calculation of what it costs to meet performance standards, that students with greater educational needs should be provided with additional resources that were needed to have an equal chance to meeting the performance standards. And whereas in 2016, the state of Michigan conducted a comprehensive statewide cost study, which is called the Adequacy Study, which produced and provided valuable information, but used only one methodology and did not fully examine the cost of special education due to data availability issues, did not examine preschool, charter schools, career and tech education, the impact of high concentrations of special need students, and the cost challenges faced by geographically isolated schools or very small school districts. Whereas we, the way we fund Michigan's public schools is fundamentally broken, and that Michigan needs to develop a funding formula that efficiently and effectively distributes these resources to the proper entities to support student success. Whereas we must reexamine our approach so all students, regardless of their circumstances, can achieve and succeed. And whereas, the School Finance Research Collaborative is a broad-based, diverse, and bipartisan group of business leaders and education experts from Metro Detroit to the U.P. who agree it's time to determine the cost of student achievement for all students pre-K through 12, and then change how our schools are funded. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomfield Hills Schools supports the School Finance Research Collaborative and its effort to determine the true cost of educating all Michigan public school students.
Any other comment on the motion?
One question.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank our community for sharing their perspective on the issues that we were dealing with this evening. I want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, and thank our crew again for helping us bring this meeting to you. Thank you very much. Hope to see you next week on the 14th, as we dedicate the Day Commons.